It's just for the, for their goal setting.
Just call me when you want, point to me when you want me to go and do the. Okay. Yep. Okay. Okay. Doesn't happen.
And so that's what really got me all up.
We need new light.
And when you say the effect there is how.
What we're talking about.
But it's school, not necessarily.
There's two lights.
Are you okay with John bringing another, are you okay with John bringing the pieces in for them?
We're gonna put them across the hall.
Put them across the hall?
I hope they bring plates because we don't have any anywhere. Do you have any anywhere?
Like, how are you?
Tom's okay.
How about that, right? Way to go.
Who are we missing?
Lydia's.
Lydia's not coming.
Yeah.
Jackie's not coming.
Oh, Jackie's not here.
Alex.
Alex, Jackie's here. Followed you to Africa. Thank.
And Alex is not coming to my meeting?
He said.
Okay, so that's.
Mark is on the hot seat.
Yeah.
The magic word.
Like to call the meeting to order? Will you get a roll call?
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Dr. Liliston.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Here.
Mr. Swicky.
Here.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Here.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 3rd, 2023. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session, and we will do so this evening, during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube, Bulldog TV, and the school district website, Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us in our record-keeping. If you would all please join me in the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a first and second to approve the minutes for the July 26 regular meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Minute passed. I'm going to pass on my present report this evening. Dr. Treese?
Yes, I do want to say a few words to thank our leadership team, our facilities and maintenance folks, for working very hard over the summer to get us ready for the school year. We've done a substantial amount of work in our schools to get them ready, our facilities ready. We're gonna have a report from Mr. Becker, who's here visiting today as part of my report, on part of that work. We've addressed the situation that's going on at Timber Lane Middle School with the sewage smell that the poor kids had to suffer through all spring. Those pipes and those floors have been ripped up. We've corrected the problem of the corroded pipes that were there. It was inspected and approved, and the concrete has been poured. We're just waiting for the floors to be put in, and hopefully that will be done by the end of this week. We have substantial work going on in all the buildings. There are HVAC systems that we are on schedule to get done. We are still waiting for the boiler for Hopewell, that, the Boiler for Hopewell Elementary, and hopefully that will be in before it gets cold. And it's on the calendar now to be in before it gets cold. So we've made some substantial progress, and Bob has some pictures that he's gonna share here of the work that we've done, and then also you're gonna see the evidence of the turf film work that we had done this year.
So we just, we've been hearing about the boiler project up at Hopewell Elementary School. This is the way they looked when we started. Going through the process of the rip out, demo work, and getting the old out. This is what it looked like after everything was out. We put a new roll-up floor in there for ease of maintenance going forward. And then you could see the new state-of-the-art oil to go in and help, so much smaller they are than the original. Were. So. What's that? I think they were original.
They were original.
Wow.
Okay. So, as Dr. Treese said, we are still in the process of finalizing. We don't actually need the heat yet until, you know, probably sometime in October. We are still waiting for the chiller, which is probably not arriving until sometime in January, February, so we're gonna have to kind of limp through the fall. Hopefully we'll have a cool fall. We do have alternate arrangements made for the students. It won't be ideal, but it'll be something just with some extreme hot weather. This project worked fairly well, considering. Again, this is just more of it, more piping that was done for the new chiller. All that's gonna be done, all we have to do is connect. And again, the new units that'll be in the classrooms. This is what Dr. Treese mentioned, this was the tear-up of the floor. Yes, there was an actual bulldozer in the hallways at Timber Lane. They saw cut the old terrazzo floor and started to chop down the middle of it. You can see the trench, that's the.
That's what was going on up.
That was the exposed piping.
I was getting a little nervous.
That had to be replaced. It looks a lot better than it actually looked in the pictures. When you saw it in person, it really kind of overwhelmed you. All right, this is after it started, this is after they laid the new pipe and the undercut, they started to put it back. And ultimately the new sealed concrete floor, which is curing as we await the delivery of the tile. So we hope to have that tiled in before we start school.
A worst-case scenario if the tile is delayed because we know with the supply chain issues, things are late. The kids can walk on this in the meantime, and then we can do that over the break, the first break that comes up. It doesn't take long to do, it's just getting the material.
The actual most, the hairiest thing that happened with this is that the contractor cut the electrical wire to some of the classrooms, so that had to be re-strung. Believe it, the x-rays that we did, that went down, didn't make it down six feet. We didn't think the wires should be lower than six feet, and they didn't see it. So, since we were observing and didn't see wires either on the x-rays, can't really blame them for it. It's a good thing you noticed that they weren't that close to you.
Exactly.
Exactly. All right. The other major project that we worked on this summer was the complete replacement of the turf over at Central High School, and I'm gonna bring up Mr. Becker. This project worked really well, it went very quickly, most in part because I think they were sick of Trip being around every day watching the construction.
Whatever it takes.
Well done, sir.
We're gonna try to go through this as quick as we can, I wanted him to kind of share the process. This is the way it looked when we started, and this is, he's cutting, he's cutting the field.
See, yeah, they're cutting it up right there. And this is, this is about seven weeks' worth of work. They did cram it all into a quick eight minutes and 30 seconds. But yeah, they cut it up, and then they roll it up, pull the rolls off, they were dumped in the parking lot and picked up. This company really did a great job. They were, they were here 12 hours a day, working Monday even, Monday through Sunday pretty much, you know, getting it done, and they did get it done on time, did a great job. So they're just rolling it up. Let me see it a little bit closer there. Those rolls are about 2,000 pounds each, because they have the rubber in them, so they're very heavy. So that's why they have the forklift loaders to get them out. So after they get everything up, they're gonna level it out, there's a laser in the middle of the field. The guy up at the top, they actually made that contraption so that they can smooth it all out, and they're just moving stuff around so they didn't get the crown perfect, and they did get it perfect. Because we had a, you'll see coming up in the next scene, a drone that scanned the field, and they had everything perfect the first time, which was remarkable. There's the drone flying in. It scanned the entire field, we got a nice little, you know, picture of that showing all the elevation, so it is perfect. And now you'll see that they're putting down, the white carpet is basically to prevent weeds from growing up, so that fabric goes down, and then they put the shock pad, which is the black plastic pad that we have, you know, had last time I was here. They lay that out, those are all, you know, four-by-four square for the most part, and they did the entire field like that. So they put that down, and then they bring the turf in, and they roll that out. Again, that's several hundred pounds' worth of turf, there's no rubber in it yet. So they lay that out, they roll it out, and they put the football field together first. So that's what they're doing here, and then they do the sides. Dr. Politzis is very into this. I can show you the entire footage of seven weeks, I have it all saved. There was lovely music I had to this too. I really, you know, nobody would do this to James Cameron, I'm just saying.
It's amazing that it was like five or six guys doing all this work.
Mm-hmm.
And this was the, this was the hottest part of the summer, when it was in the 90s at the time.
Yep. Yeah, I really felt bad for them, but they were out there, and they were working hard. They actually were finishing, when they finished our field, they were driving to Las Vegas to do another field in Las Vegas. So here, you can see, they got the football field laid out. Notice there's no numbers, there's no markings, there's, there's nothing, no lines. All that stuff has to be cut in. So they're doing the sides now, and you're gonna see how tedious it is to do all the hash marks coming up. Each one of those white dashes has to be cut out, and a line has to be cut and put in, and they're using strings to make sure everything is straight and even. This truck coming out right now is, they're dropping the numbers down, they have to cut those out and put those in.
And they're literally cut with a box cutter, they cut it out, lay it in, glue it down. I mean, it's just, it's all done by hand.
Yep. Every single line, and we have multiple sports on there, field hockey, soccer, boys' lacrosse, girls' lacrosse, every, every line was cut in there, and then all the football lines and numbers. And then they take the bricks and put them down after they glue it to hold it. And then we have our logo. They, now, I don't know if this is true, but the guy said that was the biggest logo they've ever put in a field. And the logo is beautiful, they did a wonderful job with it, it looks awesome, but again, that came in three rolls, and they had to cut it out and then lay it in and glue it all. So it was a process, I think the logo took pretty much a day to do. Yeah, they did, they did not stop. They did not stop. And then they go to the end zone next, when they put the letters in, again, all the letters need to be cut out, laid out perfectly straight, spaced out evenly, and they really did a nice job with that. So after they get everything cut and laid in and glued, then comes the part where they have to put the sand in, which is coming up next, and they have to put the rubber pellets in, and they weren't able to do that in the middle of the day because the turf heats up and the pad underneath heats up and causes wrinkles. If they drive on it, it makes wrinkles worse, so, because there's no weight on it. So what they do is, they had to work through the night and lay the sand, then lay the rubber pellets. So this is at nighttime when they're working, you can see them dumping the sand out. So the sand goes first, there's about three-quarters to an inch of sand that gets laid out, they'll use a sweeper, you'll see the field is completely covered in a second with sand, and then use a sweeper to sweep it into the turf. There was a lot of sand in that parking lot, and it's all in the turf. Mm-hmm. So after they get the sand in, then comes the rubber pellets, which are next. So they're still trying to get the sand inside the turf. Now it's starting to weigh down with a little bit of weight, so they can work a little bit during the day. And then they're back at night putting the rubber pellets in. The bags, if you look up in the corner where the truck just pulled up, they're gonna bring a white big bag there. In that bag is 2,200 pounds of rubber, like those rubber pellets, and our parking lot had a lot of, of those bags. So the one guy spreads it, and then the sweeper sweeps them in to the turf. So after everything's said and done, you're looking at about a quarter to a half an inch of turf that's sticking up. And there's two inches of rubber, so an inch of sand, that's our center logo from a drone shot. Pilot did a great job. Another drone shot. I don't know if I got FAA approval, so don't tell anybody. That's a big difference. Teams that are practicing, everybody's been on it so far, they love it. They said it feels great, it feels great to walk on. The football coaches, you know, said last year that their backs would hurt after games just standing on it for so long. They said it's, it's very forgiving, so it's great.
Well, I could feel the difference when I walked on it before it was even done. It felt like walking on a rubber-based track where the former field was not feeling that way anymore. I could just feel the difference, so I know that this is better for student athletes or the adults that are out there on it all day. So this, this is good work. Thank you, Mr. Becker, and I know you were babysitting this, you were on this. So thank you so much.
Just, just a little bit, not, not too much.
Just a little bit. One of the first part of the stuff.
Can I ask you a question? How long do you expect it to last before we're ready to do it again?
You know, we're really gonna take care of it, and we take care of it. I wouldn't be surprised if it lasts 12 to 14 years easily. So. It, yeah.
As Trip and I said, we probably won't be here to replace it. No, it was good, and we actually, at the end of it, we actually walked pretty much every inch of the field, and there were a couple of anomalies in the field that they fixed, like almost on the spot. So, I mean, it was a great crew to work for. In 21 years of watching construction, I never have seen guys work past 2 o'clock, and these guys were out early in the morning and they worked till, you know, late every night.
Yeah, they got there 6:00 AM every day, every day, and then they were there till, the earliest I saw them leave was 6:00 at night. So sometimes 7:00, 8:00, depending on what they were doing. The company was great, I could not be happier.
So as the second part of my report, and I'm sharing, I'm attacking the focus today, we do need to share our New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. Dr. Politzis, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, will share. This is the first year since they've adopted the NJSLA that it does count, and I'm doing air quotes because she's gonna talk about all the other ways that they get out of it counting, for graduation as an exit exam. So, Mr. Dr. Politzis?
Thank you, good evening, everybody. So I just want to review the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, or NJGPA. So just a little bit of a background, this was adopted by the NJDOA in 2021. As of the class of 2023 and beyond, any standardized test score or standardized assessment such as NJGPA or NJSLA, the passing score is a 725, which was lowered from pre-COVID. This specific assessment was given this spring to the juniors, and it assesses mathematics and English language arts. So there's some alternative pathways, so the, so the NJGPA is a graduation requirement. However, if students sit for the assessment and they don't pass, they can move on to the second pathway, which is receiving certain cut scores that the DOE has put in place for other assessments like the PSATs, Acuplace or SATs or ACTs. If for some reason students don't have those cut scores, then there's a third alternative pathway, which is a portfolio. So really, given these varied pathways, I'm not, we will make sure all of our students meet the requirement through one of them. Okay, so I'd like to briefly just talk about the math scores for the assessment. So this is our overall performance, and this is the only data that we have to compare to the state. Rest of it will just be district data, so I have no means of barometer for comparing it to any, any other districts or any state data. So overall, our average score for the, was 761, where the average score was 734 by the state. So 84% of our students are graduation-ready as compared to 55% of the state. So overall, we, we did very well in comparison. Okay, so now I'm gonna go through the math scores by different demographics. So for readiness by gender, there are similar results in terms of graduation readiness. Overall, 85% of the females were ready, while 82% of the males. Okay, so ready, this, this graph shows the readiness by race, and so the, I have put the percentages along with the number of students for each population. So as you can see, there are smaller representations of certain ethnicities, thereby influencing the performance percentage rates. We are taking a closer look at some of the underrepresented students to help support them more in the classroom with assessment strategies, which I'll talk a little bit more at the end of the presentation. This is readiness by economics, so for our economically disadvantaged versus our not economically disadvantaged. So again, similar to the race slide we just showed, students who identify as being economically disadvantaged are almost 50% ready. Again, the population size is considerably smaller for that, for those students as compared to the other set in the other graph. And then readiness by students with the disabilities. So you can see there's the students who have IEPs, students without disabilities, and students with 504s. So students who identified with no disability are 96% ready, students with a 504 are at a 90% readiness, while students with an IEP are at a 30% readiness rate. So we've, I've shared this information with People Services, so we'll be doing a deeper dive to see if there are specific standards to focus on, as well as provide more assessment strategies when the students are taking these standardized assessments. Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Hi, so we can have less than 1% of the population that meet the criteria for what's the alternative called the dynamic learning map. That's, that's also includes our students who are in out-of-district placements, it's a very small percentage. So yeah, everybody has to sit, and then we work with, through their IEP. After they sit, we work either on doing portfolios or some of the other tests that the students have taken outside of the New Jersey State testing, but we've never had an issue. Like, even though sometimes this happens, they, we find alternative ways to show that they have demonstrated an understanding and growth.
Okay, and then finally, readiness by English learners. So I know this does seem very alarming, however, we only have one, one student who identifies as an ELL student in grade 11. Okay, so I'm just briefly reviewing the language arts scores. So for our average score for this, the average score for this date was 765, while ours was 779. So overall, our district is at an 88% ready, readiness. So again, similar to math, there is not a significant difference in performance by, by gender. So we've 92% versus 85%. So again, similar to the math scores, there are smaller representations of certain ethnicities influencing the percentage rate. So again, I put the numbers for each population underneath the percentages. So again, we, as I mentioned before, we will be taking a closer look at, deeper diving into just, you know, different, where the standards are, those curriculum alignment, assessment strategies, all of those types of things. Again, very similar to the math. So overall, the readiness rate for economically disadvantaged students was about 53% versus 91%. However, again, there is a, you know, the percentage, the number of students who are taking, who fall into each category are listed below. And so for students with disabilities, again, we have the students who have an IEP, students without a disability, and then students with 504s. And so you can see students without disabilities and students with 504s are at almost a 97% to 100% readiness, where again, the students with disabilities are at around a 51% readiness. And the same for the ELL. We only have one student who identifies as an ELL student, and that's why the data is as it is. So our next steps, so this data has been shared with the administrative team, and the, the proper administrative team will be sharing it with the mathematics and ELA teachers, and they're gonna be taking a deeper dive into the data. Right now, we really, this is all the data we have, so we won't receive more probably until the fall, and so what we were going to do is look at the data by just to see if there's certain standards that the students aren't performing well, see, you know, if the standards that they aren't performing, where it falls in the curriculum, are they not being presented with those, with that information until after the assessment? So we're gonna look if we need to realign our curriculum, as long as assess our curriculum to make sure that we're addressing all of the standards appropriately. We also are looking about exploring just assessment strategy techniques in the classroom. I know we've looked at different types of questions to pose to, that are more representative of the questions that are in NJGPA. So like I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, this is the first time this test has counted, so I have nothing to compare it to, so I just, you know, I can take any questions that you might have.
And if I just can add before we go on to questions, if you go, if you go back to the slides of the smaller population of sets of students, right? This has, you know, our, our multilingual, language learners are ELL students, are students with disabilities, are students that are identified as economically disadvantaged because they get free or reduced lunch, and our Latino, Latinx students, and our Black African-American students have always underperformed in this district, and nationally they're underperforming. This is why it's so important for us to do the culturally responsive teaching work, because I know that we, nobody at this table believes that anybody genetically could be exposed to this, somebody having a learning disability and maybe not being able to do geometry and some of the other more difficult methods on this assessment, because it's well beyond any development mental state that they'll ever reach is one thing, but this is something we have to get a handle on, and so we have to, this validates why that work is so important. We only have, yes, these numbers are small, but they're so small, I can't believe that we can't target these students to fix this. So we have to continue this work, and that's why this work is so essential, and we have to continue to do our work, and making sure we're culturally responsive, and make sure we're not creating the barriers that keep this going.
Mm-hmm.
we're not creating the barriers that keep this going.
Have a question. I was wondering, have you done a construct analysis with, does that work? Have you done a construct analysis with respect to the, I don't know what kind of construct information the state provides, but I would think that according to what Dr. Trese was saying, that a lot of our understanding, if we could do a construct analysis and compare that to the, sort of the instructional stuff that's related to that construct, or those aspects of the construct. I mean, when you're doing, when you're, when you have a test like this, essentially, it's a random sample of behaviors, and that random sample is constricted based upon the fact that it's in a paper pencil, and it's probably multiple choice and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
It's all computer-based now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's fine, and that means they can do all sorts of analysis and test statistics and that sort of thing. But it's, it all comes down to an understanding of what that construct is, and if you have a clear sense of what the construct is, and the state is actually following that construct, is, are the items stable, or are they, are they also random?
I believe they're random.
Random, okay, good. So, that way, then, if we get a clear sense of that, of that construct, and a clear sense of how our, our instruction is, is addressing those aspects of the construct, which are within the test and without the test, because there, a lot of what we do is not going to be tested with, just because of the, of the context.
Right, the limitations, yeah.
But I would, I think with that, with that kind of analysis, you could, you could really get real close to understanding what, what it is, at least that the students are not responding well to, and, and a good sense of the behaviors that, that are probably going to get them, what, done well in this test, but, you know, also, you get a sense of how, how our curriculum is, is outside of the test.
A couple of questions.
Sure.
One is, you said that you'll wind up getting data broken down based upon different, you know, areas of instruction, things like that. You wind up getting the individual student data. I mean, to me, it seems important that if we've got students who are not at the requisite level, you know, to, to provide remediations for the material that they're supposed to...
So, right now, the only student, we have the students, and then their scores, so they don't, they don't break it down. Like, when they, when they report the NJSLA, they will break it down into, like, more content, you know, like, it could be like skills that they're, like, but for right now, it's just, Adam Zouki, this is their score, is that graduation-ready or not? Yeah. Which I think this is going to evolve more as there's more data, as the state uses this test for multiple years, but right now, you know, it's limited, it seems.
Yeah. I think a place to start from the point, Adam, this shows up even in the NJSLA score where we have the learning targets that they miss, right? So, we're pretty close to triangulation. We have this, we have that, and our benchmarks, we've got some things to fix for next year. While we don't have this set up yet, we are seeing the same data presenting like this in other areas.
My second question, what's the, the schedule and amount of time spent on these exams?
Good ques, yeah, so it's, it was, it was just a half day, so I think, I think they're about 90 minutes each assessment. So, they're very small, you know, and I, and I know Principal Riley and I have talked about it, you know, when the kids took the test, I don't know, you know, how, if they realized that this was going to be a graduation requirement at the time, so I'm hoping that as they, you know, that comes down the pike, that there will be, it will be taken more serious. And I'm not saying it's not taken serious, but just a level of...
Was there an opt-out option, or?
No, no.
There isn't, but it's, because they know that they still have the other ways of getting...
Well, if anything, sorry, I'm...
No, please, no.
In my final five minutes, so I'll get on my soapbox. Previously, there was the mechanism where you did have those other options. There's a lot of students in the school who really don't need to go through this exam because they did well enough on other measurement tests. Why waste their time, why waste your time and other people's time, focus on the kids who really need that, right?
That they don't have the other...
Right, you know?
Can I ask that question? I mean, if you're talking about a test, and you restrict the range of the test, the scores that you get from that test will be less reliable, and will probably be invalid. I mean, I, is it an IRT based, or based on, you know?
I don't know, yeah.
If it's an IRT, or just classical, it's, it's going to have, you're going to have a full range of response. And if you don't have that, then, like I said, you're going to have problems really understanding the quality of your work.
I guess I'll just say the other reason not to do that, although I appreciate your point, is this.
Right.
Because we can't get a feel for the disparities that we're seeing by race, by socioeconomic status, which to me is like the glaring story here, although the number one story is we did pretty well.
Right.
The number two, so it's like, yikes, there's some students who are struggling, and I think we missed that story, if we had the kids who were passing out because they'd done really well.
Right.
I was mainly bringing it up from an SEL standpoint. Kids have enough on their plate.
Right, right.
Especially like, when you say like, the kids, the kids have to sit through it in order to, because I know my daughters had to go through something similar, like, they had to sit through it and not do well in order to go through another pathway, which for kids like, my daughters had trouble, like, they had test anxiety. And so, to have test anxiety and be forced to take something you know you're not going to do well on, just to go through another path, is...
Right, and if the students already know that they have, they meet the cut scores for those other assessments, and they just have to sit with, for this as a formality too, that also plays, I think, a part in just their, their psyche when they're taking it.
I'll ask one other couple of questions.
No, it doesn't...
Does it have to be given in an 11th grade? The reason I ask is like, if it's a mathematics assessment, couldn't you give it at a point where they complete a certain subject, right? Because in my mind, that way, you'd have a lot of kids who were taking it early as opposed to a junior year when they had a lot of...
And they, and they started playing with that idea at the end of court, right? And this is where we ended up, is back with grade 11, and this is how it was years ago.
When we had the HESPA, yeah.
When they had the HESPA, it was grade 11, so I don't know why they went back to that, but you're right, they were, that's why we had all, remember, we had a bunch of assessments that were happening at the end of every course, because they were trying to do a back-to-back set, and then we ended up back to back.
And I'm kind of curious about what they're going to do with NJSLA, just because that's not one of the other pathway assessments, and so, student, a lot of students are excluded from, from taking, they don't have to sit for that assessment, so I wonder if they're kind of just fading that out, and it'll just be this assessment. I don't know. Thank you.
Well, this point is interesting. Do you think, do you think data, do we get data that we can do on the basis of, you know, the... This is the first time I have, I have no idea what I'm going to get.
Usually, it happens after, well after, students are placed, or things are moving, it's like, you know, the autopsy, you know, instead of something that you can actually do something with a branch, so that's...
Yeah, I just run the program, and, and that's, we have the same, that's a major challenge.
Wonderful.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move into our first public comment section, and so, the members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up in a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district's administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, again, we ask you to sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us in our record-keeping. And just to be clear, if we respond, it'll be at the end of public, all comments. Public comment is now open.
My name is Lucas Swittenberg. I live at 327 Bird Street, Pennington, and I'm speaking for a policy commentary. Firstly, I'd like to say congratulations for HVRSD's excellent work in both replacing the boiler and piping at Timberlane, and the spectacular field replacement at HVCHS. I think these are strong investments into our community, which will promote student welfare. Today, I'd like to speak on the subject of Hopewa Valley Central High School's substance abuse policies. You may remember me from when I spoke during the board's last meeting on July 26. Today, I'd like to appeal to the board on the subject of Hopewa Valley Central High School's random drug testing policy, 5538, random testing for student alcohol or other drug use. The most comprehensive source that evaluates random drug testing is a 14-year analysis of middle and high school students from 1998 to 2011. Three credible researchers published this study in the Journal of Adolescent Health, a peer-revered medical journal. It analyzes questionnaire data from almost 90,000 middle schoolers from 883 schools and over 157,000 high schoolers from 1,463 schools. This data is the most representative research that's currently available. The study asserts that while, quote, "no strong casual conclusions could be drawn from the data," there was evidence that random drug testing reduced the use of marijuana and increased the use of other illicit drugs. The 14-year analysis was an extension of a 2003 study by the same researchers that found random drug testing did not, quote, "prevent or inhibit student drug use in American schools." This ineff, this inefficacy is exacerbated by random drug testing's considerable risks, such as increased use, increased risk of future drug use, and poor attitudes towards school, and false positives and negatives, which have both been observed in similar, smaller-scale research. Altogether, these studies recommend that schools not implement random drug testing or approach it with extreme caution, and experts across the country agree. With several prominent medical organizations opposing random drug testing in schools or advocating for evidence-based harm reduction programs, including but not limited to the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Education Association, the American Public Health Association, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the Drug Policy Alliance, and the ACLU. However, the ACLU objects to random drug testing, not because of its inefficacy, but because it's an unconstitutional invasion of students' bodies and privacy. Additionally, the annual cost of random drug testing from 2018 to 2022, calculated from payments made to Sports Safe Testing Service Incorporated over four years, averages at $10,039, $10,039.25. Reinvesting these funds into programs with considerably more efficacy, such as extracurricular activities, school events, education initiatives, and general investments into our counseling department, would be monumentally more effective than random drug testing, and these approaches have all have scientific evidence demonstrating their efficacy. Random drug testing, while initially implemented in good faith by our board to combat HVRSD's growing drug problem, has been demonstrated to be ineffective. Figures provided to me by Dr. Christopher Velderman, Student Assistance Counselor at HVCHS, which I have with me here, show that the rates of substance abuse at HVCHS have been rising over the past few years, and the Director of Human Resources for HVCHS has more recently reported district-wise increases in violence, vandalism, and substance abuse. I believe that if Hopewa Valley Regional School District were to dissolve, were to dissolve its random drug testing program and reinvest those resources into evidence-based initiatives. Thank you.
My name is Drew Chifordelli. I'm a resident in Robbinsville. I live at 94 Andover Place, Robbinsville, New Jersey. I'm running for Mercer County Sheriff, and I'm sure that you've heard that they're predicting another set of lockdowns coming in September, going through November and into the following year's election. And I'm a constitutional sheriff, I'm running for constitutional sheriff, so my job will be to uphold your constitutional rights, to make sure they're not violated, and as you know, there's been some fires lately, so one of the things that I'm also doing is I'm forming a posse. People can come to my website and volunteer to be a member of my posse, and they will get training on how to be deputized in the case of an emergency. And another thing that, well, I'm sure, yeah, you know about the fires in the Canary Islands, I assume, which basically are exactly the same fires that started in Hawaii. So, there's some question as to what's going on there, of course, and then we have the mandates, and I'm sure you know that in order to get a mandate on emergency use authorization, you cannot have an alternative form of treatment. And they've just released that hydroxychloroquine and invermectin do work, and therefore, the emergency use authorization should have never happened, right? And, of course, that would have created a burst of a couple billion-dollar pharmaceutical industry. So, it's pretty clear at this point that we've all been lied to and taken advantage of, and as sheriff of Mercer County, I'm going to try to make sure that doesn't happen to the people who live in my community. Thank you.
Okay, public comment is now closed.
Do you have any, the last?
I think your names are...
Drew.
Drew?
There you go.
Oh, thank you, that's...
So, I'll respond to Lucas's comments first. Thank you, Lucas, for your report, and I know that we cut you short. I think a lot of that you shared in the last report, but could you share that with us as well? Again, could you email that to me as well, the comments that you shared tonight? We appreciate you continuing to advocate for the students at Hopewa Central High School, Hopewa Valley Central High School. We are looking into the efficacy of the program, you know that, we're looking at that very closely. We are concerned with the costs, and the board members are looking into the increase. And to your point, we have seen an increase in the number of students that are using at this time, and our random drug testing is still in place. So, we are taking all of these things in consideration. We love that you're bringing this data and this research to us, and we appreciate your continued advocacy, so thank you so much. We're still working on this one. This one is still, still being reviewed. And the second piece is the emergency closures, and I'm assuming you're talking about COVID, right, or for some sort of health crises. I am not aware of any closure that's coming. I don't think there will be any closures that's coming. We do have to abide to any regulations that come from the state or mandates by the state in terms of making sure that we're protecting students, but I don't foresee that happening anytime in the future. I hope not on my watch, because that was a lot. That's all I could say. That was a lot, and we know that we prefer that we have our students in school learning, so, so thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have, do we have any old business items? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and get a first and a second on the consent agenda items that are marked with an asterisk. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, consent agenda items pass. We're going to go ahead and move into our committee updates, and we're going to start with finance and facilities.
Mark is...
I'm going to try to use this microphone, does this work? There we go.
There you go.
All right, how about that? Okay, so, we met this past month, talking about a couple of items that we'll see, I'm sure, in some future board meetings, talking first about some of the facility rental rates. The group and us discussed some of the additional items of weekend fees and some things of that nature that we have to look into that haven't been changed in many, many years, as well as, as we saw the turf field, some discussions around some usage of, fee usages there that I think will probably make sense, and that we think will, will probably make sense. And then we're going to, as a group, continue to monitor costs on all the other rates, but maintain them currently today what they are. We spoke a lot about something that's been in a lot of the past public agendas around health insurance costs. We're going to be talking tonight about some things there regarding some withdrawals from reserves, some more to come on that. We also spent a considerable amount of time talking about some of the high-priority projects on the facility side of things. This is a topic that is ongoing, and we will be talking more about it as we move into the future, but a lot to talk about there in the coming months ahead. And then we got some updates on some of the existing projects that we saw earlier in the day, some of the pictures of concrete pouring and replacements of boilers and all the fun things that we went through. So, all in all, it was a good meeting, and more to come.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions from anyone?
Adam, anything I missed there you want to...
I don't think so. I think just one key...
I think just one key takeaway. In terms of, if we do wind up using, giving me, not remembering the term, but the making the use of the reserve fund we have for the health insurance, that would be something we don't have to do now. We would do it later in the year at the same time we do our final audit closeout.
More or less. We made the transfer that you guys approved tonight. We can rescind some of it if, as we close out the year, we can rescind some. We could use more if we need to. But it was, it's basically a placeholder number until we get through our audit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to personnel. Yes. You want to do your first and second? Do we need a roll call first? After? So we need a motion? Yes. Motion, do we, first and second, on the personnel agenda? There you go. Okay, proceed.
Okay, so we had our meeting right before this meeting, as we usually do. And you will see on the board agenda today that there are a lot of, can you hear? Sorry. There's a lot of personnel appointments, new hires, long-term subs, paraprofessionals, some adjustments due to credit attainment or some transfers, student program changes. There are some special positions for yearly approval, such as the anti-bullying specialist and school improvement panel members. You will also see some ECA appointments, things like mentors and K-5 teachers in charge and club advisors. A special shout out to all the administrators who did a phenomenal job, finding excellent staff to fill in some of the open positions and leave absence roles. And then something to keep your eyes open for next meeting, we'll be looking at the, or looking to approve the observation rubrics, like the Danielson rubric, the occupational therapist evaluation tool, et cetera. Is that? So I guess we need a roll call.
We do need a roll call to approve.
Dr. Lilyston.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mr. Suicki.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Driver.
Yes.
And Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So many pages, so many items. Yes. Yes. Okay, moving on to edcom, please.
Vicki's going to do that for today.
Hi. So for edcom, for this month, we met last week. We talked about the schedule and just topics that we would like to discuss over the next few months as, at ed committee, sorry, I don't know why I'm stuttering. And then we also talked about the NJGPA assessment results. And we had a presenter from Rutgers University there who is, just received a grant from AmeriCorps and would propose having an AmeriCorps volunteer work with the district. And they would be paying their salary. But we would, if they, but they had a certain amount of responsibilities that they had to fulfill through our district. These included teaching six lessons to fifth graders on climate change, as well as working with cafeteria staff on a food waste audit. So Dr. Treese and I had talked about if we were to adopt this, what our plan would be, and we would be looking at, this is only for elementary schools, mind you. We would be looking at having two schools participate, Hopewell Elementary in Stony Brook, and kind of use those as our pilot schools, where the other two would be more of our controlled groups. So that was where we left it.
So Carolyn McGrath was able to find that she's, you know, running our climate change committee. One of the goals that is going to come out of the committee, and I think we have a report tonight on that, is that they wanted education for students on food waste. This program would allow, and Rutgers is paying for this, this would not cost us a thing, would pay for this teacher, their AmeriCorps students that they're bringing in, to work in as many schools as we would like them to, to not only teach the kids the six lessons in grade five, so we would identify a grade, we get access to a curriculum that they've already vetted and developed in other districts. But they will also train our cafeteria staff on techniques they could use to help avoid food waste, and they would also train the kids on ways to avoid food waste. They start with getting data at the beginning on how much food we're wasting without any intervention, and at the end of it, they will, they will show you how much we've saved, how much food we've not wasted. And they showed us the decline in food waste that happened in other districts that they did. Patterson, I think, was one. And I think maybe in Newark, they were doing it in some schools as well. So it's a great program. It's a great opportunity. It wouldn't cost us anything. So what we would have to do as a district, though, is we would have to, one, decide how many schools we want to pilot this in. It would be a three-year commitment, so we could start with one school, and we can go to all four at one point if we wanted to. We can use this person for other items, like doing those applications for Sustainable New Jersey or whatever. They're going to be with us 40 hours a week, so we can use them in any other capacity on green teams that we would like. And we would have to have a, provide a site manager, though, somebody to oversee this in our, in our program, to sign time sheets and make sure the kids are actually here doing the work, or the young person, the teacher. So I don't know that they're necessarily young, but AmeriCorps is usually young folks. Yes. So the question is, do we want to participate in this? This is something we're going to have to answer quickly, because if not, they're going to move on for another district. So we left that open for tonight for us to decide, in your vote. Any more questions about that?
No. If anything, unfortunately, we missed the last meeting for the Climate Action Committee, but, you know, we got the report out, and it sounds like a great opportunity. I would ask one question. We are limited on by the number of schools. Could it potentially be advantageous to include both the high school, middle school, and some elementary schools? From this standpoint, I would suspect that the issues which drive food waste may differ depending on the age of the students. So we would probably get more information if we had that diversity.
They have, I suppose, it's just elementary.
I don't think that, like, that educational program.
Right. Because the curriculum, the classes are only for fifth grade.
Oh, that makes sense. But at least in terms of the audit, is that something we could ask them to do at multiple levels?
I mean, they've been very flexible, and they've said, you know, that this person has 40 hours a week here, and however, you know, after she or he or they figure, fulfill whatever Rutgers requirements are, we can use them however we want to, as long as it's aligned to sustainability. So I think that would be a possibility.
I have a quick question. So just knowing that this would be a time-bound exercise, do we have a plan that we're thinking about in terms of sustainability of this, not of the climate work, but of the, like, curriculum and of the learnings from this? Like, would there be a training of trainers? How would we, how would we be able to really take advantage of the materials that this person brings with them? Yes, after the three-year period.
And you're talking just for the lessons or for the?
Well, I'm, so say this is a resounding success. How can we make sure this isn't just a three-year opportunity, but that we're able to really integrate it into the school district moving forward? Sorry, I don't think this is working.
So for the food waste audit, so our faculty will be trained in that, so that will definitely be able to be sustainable, right? And then for the lessons, they're aligned with the standards, and so this person will be administering the lessons. So, you know, we can obviously train the teachers and some of the instructional strategies that they use if we like it. Yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't think we're voting on anything. We're just kind of a...
It was open to be approved.
He's kind of doing a straw poll. It's not really an action item.
Okay.
Do you want to do it?
Anyone not want to participate, see us participate? Any objections? Okay. Thank you, Vicki. Moving on, community relations. Do you have anything for us?
So at our last meeting, we invited Ms. Riley, our high school principal, to join us to do a deeper dive, and we had a very thoughtful discussion on the discipline policy and having a better understanding of how it affects the students, the different levels of intervention, the restorative practices involved within all of that. That took up our entire meeting.
Thank you, Allette. No, no worries. I did pitch the ball to you.
So we quickly went through the climate survey. I had an update that we talked with the bridge in one of the questions about communication and how people are receiving the information in the secret mess. It was fine. We were able to sort that out with Survey Monkey, so I will have that evidence available for everyone on the website. We also talked about the superintendent coffee and chat and some of the frequent topics that folks want us to talk about, so we selected the four topics that will be for next year. There may be additional topics that we need to add ad hoc based on need, but we will be talking about drug and alcohol use again as a larger superintendent coffee and chat. And I will be having this committee that folks have already volunteered for, on parents that are going to help us try to get a handle on our rising problems here in the district. We also talked about my superintendent update, which will be coming out here probably by Wednesday. It'll be splash a newsletter. It won't be my dry email that I send you. And hopefully, it'll be more user-friendly than what we've done in the past. And then finally, we got a PTO liaison from our committee, and I think that's going to be Dr. Ginnabasi, who's going to do that. So that's what we talked about during our last meeting.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. Moving on, our first update for climate action.
All right. And thank you, Bob, for getting it on the agenda. Thank you. So, yes, unfortunately, we weren't live at the meeting because our board meeting conflicted with it last month. But I'll just hit a couple highlights. Dr. Politzis mentioned one of the big ones, right, in terms of having the AmeriCorps volunteer. Couple of other things that have been discussed about, I mentioned before, we're looking at things like disposable utensils versus, you know, reusable utensils. Basically, the one situation we have is only the secondary schools have the ability to dishwash. So it's definitely a limitation. But that's actually something we're studying. We're assessing what would be the cost, potentially thinking about pilots, we'll see. It's one topic. One of the big topics is disposal of waste and, you know, proper putting materials in bins for composting, things like that. I think I mentioned last time, the elementary school kids are real good, the middle school kids are real good because they take the direction of it. With the high school, you have the challenge that not everybody uses the cafeteria. So the team spent a lot of time thinking about ways to promote use of the proper disposal techniques, education, you know, using things like the morning buzz. You know, it's, it's actually something that, to me, you know, one of the great things about this committee is it's, it's a great way for the kids to take direct action and promote something positive. And to me, just something simply is knowing that you're supposed to put things in particular bins and such to promote composting, things like that. It's a little thing, but it's something they can do. So the more we can do to educate people and potentially, you know, change the, you know, the mindset of people, it goes a long way. So it's those types of things that, you know, the committee's focusing on, eliminating bottled water, for example, right? Having the water, the bottle refilling stations, having cups available that are compostable. It's little things like that. So, you know, a bunch of topics like that that were discussed. So unfortunately, we missed it. The next meeting is Wednesday, so we'll be at that.
I think our signage around trash cans is intuitive at that school, if you ask me. I'm always like... Awesome. Any questions? All righty, moving on then to policy.
Okay, so we have a little bit of a list. So let's see. So can I add a motion to move the policies and regulations up for first reading? Okay, so we have three. We have Regulation 7510, use of school facilities. We have Policy and Regulation 2419, school threat assessment teams. So use of school facilities, this is actually a policy we review fairly frequently, but actually, we're doing something a little bit different this year. As we started having some discussions about the fees for use of the schools and the fact that we're in an inflationary environment and that the costs of supporting custodians and staff to monitor the facilities while they're being used are increasing, we wanted to, you know, we talked about having the ability to do that. It was noted that, you know, first, that has to go through Finance and Facilities Committee and then through multiple readings. And from that standpoint, if we're just talking about fee structure, it's something that gets approved by the board anyway. So we thought it made sense to just do a small amendment to that regulation to say, you know, the board shall have the prerogative to go ahead and set the fee schedule, you know, in accordance with Mr. Colapita's office. So we're putting that in, and it will help, you know, make that process more straightforward, simpler, going through, you know, revisions of that regulation. So that's good. School threat assessment teams is a new policy and regulation. This deals with a framework for setting up the structure of teams at each school or potentially within the district, a single one in the district, to deal with threat assessments. And this actually was not that much of a problem for the district to enact, as Smith walked us through, because it's something we have in place already. If anything, it's a model that her predecessor, Mr. Suzo, put in place at our schools. And, you know, the makeup of our committees more or less meets the criteria. So if anything, it's a, these are a policy and regulation that came from the state. Again, we have a structure that complies with it. The only thing I'd point to the board is we made some small modifications to it, thanks to Dr. Treese, and we actually got some comments on that related to some of the language we put in there in terms of the relationship to our local police forces and our municipalities. The complexity in our district is, we are a regional district. We have multiple municipalities, multiple police forces. We have, I believe, a single representative from one of the police forces on the team. So we put in some language in the policy which more or less reflected that this person is the interface to both local law enforcement amongst the different municipalities as well as municipal governments. So that's what that was intended for. I don't know whether you'd like me to comment on it, but just the one other comment that Dr. Lilyston had was in regard to reporting requirements. So I don't think there's, it's not like HIP or anything like that. I don't think there's a strict reporting requirement in the regulations and policy.
Yes.
Yes.
And I think the question that I had sent to Mr. Suicki was just if we'd be willing to include language in this policy that speaks to some kind of report out on aggregate data related to how many assessments are happening, who is getting assessed, so we can see if there's disparities by race or IED status. And then also, what's the, what's the outcome of those assessments? So is nothing happening? Are we getting a whole bunch of stuff that really we shouldn't be getting? What's the legal outcome, if there is one? What's the disciplinary outcome, if there is one? And that may already be done in a different place, I'm not sure, but...
Would you like us to add to the policy, report out to the board on these things? Is that...
I think that's the question that I'm putting on the table. Yeah.
Is there any way of making sure that that's where our data, that kind of research? I mean, I haven't been in there really closely attending any of the research, but I've seen a lot of our... I mean, we don't want it to be left behind if we want this as something really important in terms of our threat assessment...
The protocol?
The protocol, whatever, yeah, whatever, however we go about this process, it needs to be adjustable in terms of what languages reflect.
Well, the problem with this is though, these are policies and regulations that are mandated, so we have to follow the protocol according to how many states, what they gave us, right? Us reporting out, I think we can make that adjustable, we can't really change the procedure of what they're asking us to do on that.
But we can contain how we incorporate it, we can contain how we think about corollary reality, just about.
I think it's a good point, Dr. Wilson. There, I did look a little bit at the research on this, and I know that there are evidence-based models for this, and so I think that's a, you know, maybe we're following one now, and I'd love to hear more about that. You know, if not, you know, ought we to look into some of the models that are being used? The Cornell method comes up a lot, is that what you've seen in the research? Yeah, yeah.
I would ask one thing from the standpoint of reporting to the board, would it be logical to do like a biannual report like you do with, you know, we receive reports on weapons, violence, vandalism, things like that? Would just, you know, an overall assessment of the number of cases that the teams went through, you know, in the reporting...
I'm thinking the other issue we're putting on, because during October, you know, B and D reports, whenever we do that, we can report on them, put that all as part of it, there's no problem. So I'm putting a note down if you need to add that in the... And then I'm also talking, Mr. Two, while we're seeing, we did just pick up the research, we took a lot of research involved, and we find best practices in this course, so we can go back and look at what models, the models are for tomorrow, because we're close to the state.
Do they have a... Based upon, the protocols are a reference of articles or research with the board.
Not that they provide that, but I think that they're looking at, they just provide them, but no, we just put the policy and regulations together, you know, we do get everything from the board.
Oh, we just have the voices. Aye. Okay, so can I get a motion to move the items up for second reading, please? Okay, so let's see, what we have for second reading today is three policies, 5533 for student use of tobacco and nicotine, 5535 passive breath alcohol sensor device, and policy, I'm sorry, that's regulation 5534 substance abuse. So the one thing I'll say is, you may remember last month, these were three items which were relatively small changes, again, based upon the feedback provided by our high school and middle school administrators in terms of what they felt was effective, what they felt was not being effective, et cetera. The larger changes were going into the student code of conduct, based upon the ongoing reviews we have going on concurrently, we are not ready to bring that for that final second reading approval by the board. Dr. Treese, you may want to make the, communicate to the board the comments with regard to what Ms. Riley had said with regard to, you know, policy violations and such, what occurs then?
On which one, on the substance abuse or on the...
Oh, you mentioned for the code of conduct, just like, you know, we have in place existing maximum penalties or...
Yes. So we are still looking at that, the regulation for the code of conduct in that, there were some questions from the board about how stringent some of those consequences were. We lessened those in that meeting. We're also adding in a specific code from the state around suspending kids in grade K through five, which is basically, you don't do that unless there are risks to themselves and others. We don't suspend the little bobs, so we're going to put that in there, going back to the code. In addition to that, we're going to add some language about these being maximum penalties that this does not reflect students with IEPs, 504s, they don't get the maximum penalty a lot of times, it depends on the student, so there's needs base. If, like, say, for example, if whatever it is your violation was, was part of your disability, you may not get the full consequence that another kid may get. However, there does, there are other steps that need to be taken. So we're going to put that that happens in schools, although that's happening anyway. We're going to spell that out in the policy. So we wanted to get this done before the start of school, so that we had this new policy in place. We won't have this ready until the next board meeting, but since these are maximums, Principal Riley and the administrators, just like they've always have, are going to take the feedback from the board and, you know, take the consideration in that we're not about getting kids, suspending kids out of school when we don't have to, right? We want them in school learning as much as possible, and these punitive consequences don't always work, and we have something in place now, we have the old code in place, and we're, but we're moving forward with the new ideology that just suspending kids and putting them out for two weeks is not always the answer, especially in the case, the conversation was, for example, substance abuse. If you have a child that's using, suspending them out of school for two weeks with no, you know, sometimes parents' supervision, you got to go to work. That's not fixing the problem. So, moving forward, we're going to be conducting ourselves accordingly.
No, thank you very much. No, the main thing I was going to point out amongst the other three that we're looking at tonight, the main change is in, I'd say is in policy 5535, which is the passive breath alcohol sensor device. What we're doing there, I remember from last month, was we're adding a statement saying that such a device may also be used by the building principal or designated to determine whether liquids in a student's possession contain alcohol. So this is not random screening, this is purely a case where there's, you know, there's a reason to suspect that there may be alcohol, if something has occurred, so it's not random. That's the main change among the three that we have up for second reading.
Any questions? All those in favor? Roll call, oh, roll call. Oh, because it's final, sorry.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Swickie?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson? Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Dr. Lilston?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. I guess we are ready to move on to calendars. Need a first and second to approve the August and September calendars? All those in favor?
We got to set them first.
Oh, right.
They're on the table for discussion.
Moving on to the next... Okay.
I'll go first, as always, finance on the 11th, 5 o'clock. Personnel, obviously, is always on the, will be on the board meeting night, the 18th, at 6:15.
Right?
13th to 5? I have SCL already on the calendar for the 14th, at 10 a.m. Just a thought, I don't know whether you want to get there, they might be able to set you up for the space over there if you wanted to do it.
Let's do that. So let's put it at 8 o'clock and just know that we have a hard stuff at home, that working? And I'll just put it over there. Yeah, I'll reach out to him.
Yeah, let Dave know.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
And then community relations.
8 a.
Okay, we can record it if you can and give it to you, and you can give us comments. Does that work too? I know how hard it is to get these stuff.
Community relations last.
Oh, community, right. I don't know what the date is. So the week before? Maybe the...
So 7th, Thursday, the 7?
Or the, or the 14th.
The last time we did it, did we do it after SCL?
Yes. That works. What, it's on the 14th?
SCL, before and after SCL. What works for the government? Does that work for you? So what time on the 14th? 11, okay? Jack, Jackie.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? All right, calendars passed. All right, so we are going to be moving in, oh, sorry, yeah, public comments. So we'll have our second public comment session. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up in the future, in a future meeting, so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. Public comment is now open.
Drew Tifadelli, 94 Andover Place, Robbinsville, New Jersey. I just wanted to add to the comment that I made earlier, there's also a constitutional crisis hotline on my website, drewformercer.com. So if anybody in the community feels that their constitutional rights are being violated, please go there, fill out the form, and we'll get it documented and hopefully be able to point you in the right direction to somebody who will help you, you know, take care of those, your rights.
Thank you.
I'll just ask real quick. Kate Hamm, Hennington, New Jersey. I just wanted to ask real quick, the agenda shows that prior to public comment, there was a public discussion of the board's self-evaluation, so I just wanted to know if that was skipped over or if it's being discussed elsewhere.
Yeah, we're actually in the process of doing that, but I'll, after we wrap, I'll address that. Thank you. Thanks, Kate. Anyone else? All right, public comments are now closed. And yes, thank you, right before we were going to go to executive session, it's just really a reminder, A, to let the public know that we do a self-assessment, but also for the board, if you look at green notes, there should be a link for each of you to go to the NJASBA site and initiate that. Once we wrap, my, our goal is to have that complete by the end of, I think I said, next Friday? Let me check myself, this Friday. I said that last Friday for this Friday. So we'll complete that and then arrange with Jesse to come in and review, and we'll have a little retreat on that. But it's standard practice, something we do every year, and we intend to hold ourselves accountable to each other in that way. So that is the reminder to you, and also to let the public know that we take that process seriously and are going to do so.
And that link will take you to the New Jersey School Boards Association website. You'll have to log in with your district ID, but I don't know what your passwords are, they're personal, they're set for you. If you don't know, there's a button that says, you know, click here to reset.
And also, both of those links are in the green notes in terms of questions, process, and who to call if you have technical challenges. Okay, awesome. So anything you need to respond to? Okay, awesome. So the board is now going to move into executive session, and I do have a comment to, or something to read here. Okay, so any pending or anticipated litigation, is that the right word? No, that's not the right... You're just going to skip all of that, huh? Okay. We are going to be speaking of special ed matters. Harassment, HIB matters, and personnel matters, and action may be taken. So we will pardon the public at this time. Oh, we do need a motion, my apologies. So you have first and second? All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. It'd be good to know now as I escort the public out.